Update of logos and slogans for the city of Bellevue. It was part of the strategic planning process to work on a new look and maybe set a slogan for the city of Bellevue. But before I get started, first I need to thank Lieutenant Steve Hatfield with the Bellevue Police Department. He did all the graphics that you're about to see. He brings a lot of added value to this because we don't have to pay someone to do these graphics and we have that ability in-house. Over the past several months, we've been working on just toying with new logos and seeking out comments on what you would like to see in the graphics. Many of the comments were, "We like the logo, but it's kind of old." It has a good design. People do recognize it. But the B-52 bomber and the old church are very historic, I guess. We're looking to bring something up to date. Another comment was that it was sometimes difficult to see and understand what it was in small print. I'm not sure how we're going to be able to get away from that problem, but there are some things we can try and that's why we're bringing this to your attention today so we can get some more feedback and direction on what we should do. And one of the other things we need to work on is to create something that can be uniformly used in all departments with the exception of police and fire. They have their own logos. In fact, it was Lieutenant Hatfield, from what I understand, that designed these logos as well and painted them on the walls. So another tip of the hat to Steve. Again, as you can see, the logo is a good logo and it's a good design in most everyone's opinion, but we wanted to try and update it. And this was the first one that Steve brought to us, to me, and I kind of liked it, but we, you know, it says a lot. Not everyone might understand what the 93 is, but I think it represents Heroes Park, American Heroes Park. And then, of course, you have the fighter jets there, indication of a home of Stratcom. That was just one idea. And then Lieutenant Hatfield said, "It really pops when you put a black border around it and then it stands out. It looks more three-dimensional." So how does everyone feel about the ring around the logo?
More visible.
Definitely answers it.
Bellevue is more than a park and Stratcom.
Right.
But the border itself, easier to see.
Okay, great.
But I think that I like the border a lot when it's in a big format, but one of the rule of thumbs with logos is always adaptable. Can it be transferred across several mediums? And I think you would have problems transferring that across several mediums because of the black, unfortunately, no matter how great it looks.
And the reverse out on the stars, it might not print real well.
Right. There's like four things that you always have to look for with a logo and one of them is adaptability. And I think that that unfortunately, depending what medium you would use, if you were to put that, say, in the newspaper.
It may have been why there wasn't one in the first place, but...
But his artwork is great. I mean, he should definitely be praised for the work he's doing.
Yeah, and that's kind of the information we're looking for is just a general feedback and a little more direction on...
You know, one of the things that was wrong with our first, not wrong, but one of the issues with the first logo, and I see it with this logo too, is that of the four things, it needs to be adaptable, we just talked about that. It needs to be timeless, which it is not. Who's our target audience? I'm not clear on who that is right now. And it needs to be unique. And I think that it's definitely unique. I don't think it's adaptable. I'm not really sure who our target audience is based on the logo. Can you tell me who our target audience is?
Everyone, I guess, at this point. Everyone within the city of Bellevue.
Well, that's like saying a shoe store's target audience is anybody that wears shoes. That's not right. Right? Who's our target audience?
We need help determining that.
Okay.
We were just, like I said, we were just doing this to get the ball rolling and get people talking and thinking about it.
That's my input. Unique, adaptable, target audience, and that it's timeless.
Yes, okay.
Larry?
Yes.
I hope I'm not the only one that has this question, but what is the 93?
The 93 is for the Pentagon on 9/11.
Oh.
I believe, isn't that correct?
Flight 93.
Flight 93, yes. Yeah.
Have you seen the art of his mom?
Like that.
That's a concern. I want to respect what happened and respect those people, but I don't want people to think about death and destruction when they look at our logo. I want a much more upbeat, I want a much more optimistic, current, timeless kind of image. So I understand, but...
Sorry. So you're giving me more examples now? I'll let you continue on and then give you more feedback. Yeah, these are just discussion, these are just things that he's illustrating the types of things we can do, or that, when I say "we," I mean Steve, on his computer, on his software. But yeah, he thought Heroes Park and were some of the things that were, that tied closely to Bellevue, that related closely to Bellevue and identified Bellevue as one of our strengths and one of our amenities that people might be attracted to. And also tied to the organization of the city of Bellevue. He changed the stealth, which doesn't, there's not a lot of stealth bombers at Stratcom, but they do, it does relate to Stratcom. And the bottom one is a nice picture or nice image of American Heroes Park. However, that too would be hard to see very small. So there's another image with a different stealth. And then I recognized the fact that the image would be hard to see very printed, very small, and asked if he could zoom in onto the fountain a little bit with some trees around the lake there. And then he, the Stratcom image is much more relative to what you might see around here, in my opinion. I really like the two-plane approach and the cooperation between the fueling and Stratcom would probably oversee an operation like that. And then building off the, our patriotism, we thought that might be a little timeless. And then I thought, if we're going to be patriotic, why not be really patriotic? And I said, "Well, let's be a little more active and patriotic." And then there's another one, I think. Oh, the, sorry. So get an idea of what we can work with and if you like the logo without the ring for print, or we could develop a few of them if you like, but as long as they were of the same images, to have that uniformity, that would be great. Yes?
I know I'm a broken record. I'm not seeing who our audience is. I've got to put on my business and marketing hat, and if you were my client, I would tell you that I don't understand your message. I would say the artwork's awesome. Steve's awesome, but it doesn't work for me and I don't understand who you're trying to give a message to, that the only thing that Bellevue has going for it is a park and off it.
No.
No, but you see what I'm saying is that you've got to take yourself outside of the, it's not, it has nothing to do with you personally. It has to do with the message. And if we're really trying to revamp a message, and I'm kind of worried now about the tagline, I know you call it a slogan, but really it's a tagline. Because if we don't know who our audience is, how can we create a tagline?
Well, we just came up with some that we got from a variety of people just to get it started. We're not, like I said, this is just to get people talking and to get more feedback and identify an audience. Our audience, I guess, for me, the audience would be the city of Bellevue and the citizens of Bellevue, or whoever we do business with, so.
So what message do you want to give to those people we do business with? That we have a park and off it.
These are some of our strongest elements. We can't put all of Bellevue's best elements up, but we can put, you know...
You see a lot of communities with quadrants, you know, like when you do the spring, winter, fall, and summer seasons, you know? I mean, we seem to be stuck in halves. I don't know, I just, I think we're still stuck in the past and I just want to see it move forward.
Sure.
So that's my input. I hate to be a squeaky wheel, I just, but if the same thing keeps coming forward, I'm going to keep saying the same thing, but I'm only one person.
Well, I think probably, yes, real quick. I think the key thing is, Carol, you're bringing up some great points. It's probably really imperative, as Laurie indicated, that's where it becomes truly a group and collaborative effort to get people thinking and provides good suggestions so we can bring forth other potential perspectives and how we present this. The bottom line, we knew the current one is just out of date. It clearly has to be, and we keep, we've been talking about it and talking about it and we haven't done anything. So as you know, during the strategic plan, that was one of the things, is we need to start making some changes. We do need uniformity, probably, but for, I guess you might, food for thought type arrangement here. I don't know. Larry, do you have some proposed slogans that you have come up with and maybe that'll kind of...
That was the next slide.
Before you move off of that, if I could, if I look at these images first, we're creating images rather than, as Councilwoman Blood is saying, we create the words and the concepts and what we want to show, and then we create the images from those. But when I look at this, any military base, city, anywhere in the country could say that same thing other than home of Stratcom. This doesn't tell me anything special about Bellevue. It could be any base, anywhere, that's patriotic and American. So I'm, and I like the art, I appreciate what Dan is saying about having something to start the discussion. That's great. So I'm not just being critical in that regard, but I'm looking for first setting the parameters and then we come up with the artwork.
Sure. And again, the reason we want, the reason I wanted to put some artwork up was just to show you, showcase Lieutenant Hatfield's abilities on, that he's been able to work with. And many of these images are just building off the old image and some of the slogans that you're about to see that, or taglines, I'm sorry, Carol, taglines. And just to go from there, just to find a starting point to get people discussing what you would like to see. And we also had some ideas on how to create a selection process. Maybe we would, well, anyway, I'll move forward here. Now, slogans or taglines, some of the ones that were, that have come up was, of course, the birthplace of Nebraska. That one's currently being used at the park on the big marquee. I believe that's Heroes Park, is it? Or is it?
Hayworth.
Hayworth. Yeah. It's as you come over the bridge. And then another one was Nebraska's patriotic city. Nebraska's first community. Founders of the good life. And these are just a few, these are just ideas. Gateway to the good life. Tying into being the first community in Nebraska. The good life with a view. Tying into Bellevue. Or home of heroes. But we would love more, yeah.
I just want to say, when you tie into another tagline, like with the state of Nebraska, which is the good life tagline.
Right.
And then when Nebraska spends millions of dollars to change that tagline, which they do probably every decade at least, and they just tried to do it recently, then you're stuck with that tagline, which doesn't mean anything to anybody once the state's tagline goes away. So just kind of a word of warning.
Yeah, and I imagine...
I think they're creative and interesting, but again, not timeless.
I like to approach the good life with a view. It puts a smile on people's face, and I think that's what we need in all of this. We need, when people see it, they just feel good. From the image, from the sound, it makes them feel good. And so for me, that's a bottom line.
Yeah.
Optimistic, hopeful, I want to go to that place. That's a great place.
And again, we're approaching this from the city of Bellevue's organizational perspective and also the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce is working on their own branding along with the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce, which is kind of strange that the timing of this is creating some confusion within the community about branding. But for us and the strategic plan, this was for the organization as a whole, so.
Have we thought about opening the tagline and give some of the parameters of what we want to the schools, to the community? I would assume that's the next step as we're...
That's, yeah.
Okay.
That's where we're headed. And these were just ideas, preliminary ideas, and I'm confident, no matter what you or the employees or collectively we choose, not everyone's going to like it. You know, we're going to try and grab the biggest share of the community that we can to like it, but of course, there's always going to be, you know, difference of opinions, I guess, so. But I do appreciate the four elements we need to look for in a logo and slogan, so, or tagline. Again, more ideas are needed. How will the determinations be made? We thought we would have the city staff weigh in on what they liked and, of course, the council, and then do something with social media to get the community to weigh in. When the time is right, we can roll out the new brand and implement the changes and create new materials as the need arises, and of course, that will all need to be budgeted. But, yeah.
I just want to say, I appreciate all the work. I know I sound like a Debbie Downer and that it might sound hypercritical. I just, I know how much effort it's going to take once this is done to rebrand everything, and it's so much easier to get it right before you spend the money and before you do it. And bless Steve's heart for donating his time to do this. He's doing an awesome job. But, you know, buyer beware, we want to make sure that we do it right the first time. I was running the chamber when La Vista got its new logo, and I remember the gasp in the audience when they presented it. They're still using it, but I heard things like, "That looks like a Dr. Seuss cartoon." And no offense to La Vista, but that was a really unique approach from the previous one they had, and you heard a lot of grumblings amongst the community that weren't positive. And now they've paid for it and they've got it and they're using it and don't want to be stuck like that.
Right. And with that question, or with that comes the question, we have a good brand identity with the logo that we have now, with the upper and lower images. Do we want to continue to work with that or do we want to scrap that or, and start from scratch with new, a new brand, or?
I still think you need to figure out who your target audience is at the very beginning and what message you're trying to get out, because once you do that, it won't really matter if it's same or different, or the logo's got to speak to what your target audience wants and the logo's got to speak to what your message is going to be.
And if we're approaching this from an organizational design versus like a tourism design or something of that nature, I see two different images then. So I'm, again, I would...
Target audience.
Yeah. Steve and I were approaching this from the existing organization and the citizens of Bellevue.
And your taglines really don't mesh with what your logos are saying. You've got, except for the hero thing and patriotic thing.
Yeah.
So I mean, they've got to be consistent.
Again, it was brainstorming.
And again, I'm not trying to be hypercritical. You asked our opinions.
Absolutely. That's why I'm up here. And that's, I wanted for progress.
I'd like to see on one of the halves, like a river and the trees and the forest and deer.
Oh, okay.
Lots of deer.
Yeah, okay.
No, but really, I would play up the scenery more than, more than the airplane.
Actually, there is a, an image up in the Public Works Department right now of a fishing pier next to the river with Heroes Park behind it and the lake with the fountain. But that, again, if we put all of that on there, that would be hard to see when you printed it. So we would need to focus in on like the river edge and some trees and maybe images of people fishing or, and deer. Yes, Steve?
Thanks, Larry. I'd like to compliment Carol and Don on their comments. I think that's exactly the approach we need to take, and I also think we need to really solicit the community for their input with respect to the design and the taglines, is that what you call them? Because I think this represents the community, not the staff, not the council, not, this is the city, and this is a really critical thing to move forward with. So I applaud your efforts and I look forward to seeing more.
Sure. And many of the taglines are from members of the community that, I got a couple of them from a Rotary meeting. I got a few of them from just talking to people out in the council meetings. And I think Nebraska's first community was one of them. Birthplace of Nebraska is off the marquee down at the park. Gateway to the good life and founders of the good life are, I'm not sure where those came from. The good life with a view, that one's mine. So now I'm sure everyone will scratch that one right away. We don't want the, no. No, but again, and home of heroes, I'm not sure where that one came from either. It was just written down, so. But again, this is good direction that I needed to hear. Also, we need to keep in mind, we're doing this on a shoestring budget, just on our time and Lieutenant Hatfield and I are far from marketing experts, which is why the information you provided today is very valuable. We can go back and then we can also work with, broaden that audience out a little bit each time and then get some feedback from the community as well and go from there. And of course, if you have more ideas.
I'm working.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got it all ready.
Oh, super. So if there's any other questions, this is just an update and to get the ball rolling and let me know what you think in the future, and we'll keep moving forward until I need to requisition some funds from Rich.
Larry, I would just add too, we have Bellevue University here and we've got a business school and they do marketing plans, they do some of these things, so does UNO. We've got some Creighton University. We've got some great students, young, creative minds looking to the future, so...
I've contacted each and every one of those entities for an intern to help with this, and none of them have responded in...
I'm thinking, again, some kind of a contest or some incentive. They get recognition. You've got to make it pay to people so that they're willing to invest their time. If we don't have money, what else can we do? I'm not so creative to come up with the artistic designs. I'm glad we have somebody who can do that. And even the taglines, but again, I just want to reiterate, having the guidelines in mind and going with that first, and then everything comes together to fit, then you start visualizing, conceptualizing, and moving into what it actually looks like. Because most business logos these days, you can't read any words in them. They're all symbols of something. And so whether we do this that's old school or something that's just a symbol, but it's a big project and I salute you for taking it on.
Well, it was, my name was next to it on the strategic initiative, so I figured I'd better move toward it.
You got roped in.
I enjoy doing it. I like to work with Steve Hatfield. He's very creative. Imagine that from the police department. And, no, I'm just kidding. But no, he's very creative with the artistic of, yeah, so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the council? Thank you, Mr. Burks. Larry, maybe we can also include the city color, flower, bird. I think a lot of cities have a color to it, a bird or a state, or, I don't know if we have a bird. I don't know if we have a flower. Maybe that's something we can task Bellevue University, the Bellevue Garden Club, those communities. And then maybe our trails. We have, we're almost at, how many hundreds of miles? Are we up to 100 miles of trails?
There's a lot.
And just today, I received a map of Bellevue has one of the greatest back road bike trails in the country. And so I just got that information. I'll get that out, but those are some great points. Thank you, Mr. Burks.
Again, as you come up with these ideas, please send them to me. I appreciate it and I'll be sure to use them and work with Steve, and then we'll also try and find more resources to pull from, from a knowledge base, and then go from there.
Thank you.
You bet.
Item 3D, City Administrator's Report. Mr. Burlowitz.
Okay, yes. If council has any questions of myself or staff that are here, we would be more than happy to answer those.
Item number four, review and discussion without actions of the items on the agenda of the regular council meeting this evening at 6:00 PM. Begin with item number three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. B, consent agenda. C, approval of the minutes of the April 14th regular and pre-council meetings at the city council. Item four, approval of claims. Five, special presentations, none. Six, liquor license, none. Seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. 7A, ordinance number 3757. B, ordinance 3764. Excess to item eight, none. Nine, none. 10, none. 11, resolution. 11A, resolution 2014-12. Excess to item 12, current business. 12A, approval of appointment of Rusty Hike and Tom Yeoman. B, ratify the mayor's signature on service agreement with US Cellular. C, approval of renewal of agency of agreement with Hike Real Estate. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked for some information on the current agreement with Hike Real Estate with regards to the form. There wasn't any form that I could see as far as the agreement as it was originally accepted by the city, and that was done, I believe, in 2009. With the compensation that is spelled out in, at a real original ordinance or the original agreement, excuse me, I guess my question to the council and the administration is, why haven't we taken this thing out for an RFP for bids for just evaluating other potential real estate firms for the benefit of the city? If there are that many qualified real estate companies in Bellevue, I think they certainly would entertain the opportunity to bid on this. Not that Hike has done a bad job for us, because I think that agency and Dave Dunn have done a phenomenal job, but I think just in fairness that we ought to do that with, without just coming back continually with year-to-year agreements.
Councilman Blood.
I can address some of that from when our initial conversation was. I know that we did some comparative research when we first took them on to make sure that what was being offered was something that was competitive with other realty companies. But the initial thought was consistency, that if we have somebody that is representing our property, we want somebody that knows it inside and out, and David Dunn's done an excellent job of constantly pushing that property and knowing, you know, he knows the good, the bad, the ugly of all of our properties. If you stopped him on the street and said, "Okay, I'm interested in this property," he could say, you know, "There's a drainage issue with this property," or there's, it backs up to a garbage dump, "We don't have any property like that." But he'll know exactly what's going on. And one of the reasons we haven't switched isn't because we don't believe in spreading the wealth and allowing other people to participate. It's that, at the time, really nobody offered any competitive pricing, and once we got into selling the property and he's done such an effective job, we didn't want to lose that momentum. I mean, we've been able to sell the Chorus Lab property, we're working on the 36 and K part, all of the, and I hate this expression, but I've never heard it called anything else, the crap... The, the crap lots is what they call them. The ones that, the, I hate that expression. I've never heard it called anything else. The lots that developers use, have when they build and this lot's big enough for a house, but maybe this lot isn't. So there's like this lot that's just sitting vacant that we get when we, the Sid comes into our community. He's done a really effective job of, of, of contacting homeowners and getting those lots sold and on the tax rolls. So I, I'm not saying I disagree with you. I'm just trying to give you a little bit of history of why we have consistently gone ahead and, and, and approved it because competitively, competitively speaking, it was comparable, uh, uh, cost-wise. And because he has done such a fine job of representing Bellevue, if we lose that consistency and bring in somebody new, we kind of start all over again. And then we kind of lose what we implemented in two thousand nine when we started with the vacant properties committee and trying to get all this stuff back on the tax rolls and trying to move forward for economic development. So I would have concerns that we'd lose that momentum. But that is why we did it the way we did it. So again, not to disagree with what you're asking, but to kind of give you a history of where we're coming from.
Mr. Burlowitz.
And I would just kind of dovetail on what Carol said. Um, it actually started, I think, out as, uh, initially as what, Century Twenty-One was the company and then went to CBS Realty. It's Hike now because there was a splitting of the companies. And since I've been here, I know that the chief reason last couple of years that we've stuck with Dave Dunn in particular with that because we were right in the middle of some major, obviously, deals. Corus Lab was a very long and drawn-out sale, as you know. Uh, we were involved, of course, um, with, again, with this thirty-six and K part, as well as some other properties, even at the time when we were dealing with the, um, Wall Street properties. So, uh, again, because we had the same person involved, um, yeah, uh, we wanted clearly to get those, I might say, to the finish line before we, you know, would, would go another direction. Um, and since I've been here, that's been, as, as far as I've always deemed that really the, the, the basis as to why we, we haven't changed, uh, representatives. And so, um, that's kind of the history that I'm aware of.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would just reiterate a little bit of what each of them said. State statute does allow us for specialized kinds of things to do sole source without doing a bidding. This may kind of border on that, but we don't have a, a lot of people who specialize in Bellevue and understand the market in the same way that a local person would. And I think that was part of the reason that we chose somebody locally. Uh, kind of humorously, we have had three different agencies, as Dan described. It's just that it's all been the same person with those three different agencies. But in this case, we've got some specialized kinds of properties and to have the consistency and to have somebody who understands the specific market. We could get somebody perhaps cheaper and would have a lower rate. But if they didn't understand the market, if they weren't specific in Bellevue and understood and did the marketing like he can and had the connections, and even I think within the current agency, he's specialized in some of these larger commercial specialized properties. So we have a specialized market and lowest price may not get us, the low, lowest price commission may not get us the highest price in a sale. So if we can come up with somebody better, I'm sure open to looking at them. But to just put it out for bid and getting a lower price, maybe shooting ourselves in the foot.
Well, I thank you and I appreciate your comment, Mr. Preister, um, Preister, excuse me. Um, that wasn't the intent of my, my statement. My statement was, I, I have full confidence in what Dave Dunn does for us and what Hike Real Estate does for us. Um, we haven't put it out for bids in a long time. And I'm sure that every real estate company has people that specialize in multitude of different areas.
I don't think so.
Well, I may be wrong. I don't sell real estate. So, um, you know, it, it, in my mind, it keeps getting approved and I questioned that when I saw this on the agenda.
Sure. No, and it's welcome to, and good that we do question.
Mr. Burlowitz.
And it's probably good that you did because it even helped me to kind of understand the history. Cause when you would email the question, I wasn't sure how long, how back far it went. So when we were able to get all the, the agreements and the minutes and that, then it kind of also brought me up to speed as to how this all evolved. So it was, it was a good, uh, it was a learning process.
For me too, Dan.
Other questions or comments on item C? Takes to item D, approval extension of lease on seven two six four Crook Road North? E, approval of an authorization for mayor to sign campground host agreement. Mr. Knudsen.
I've just got a question for Mike. Um, today I ran into a guy that was coming into City Hall. Um, he was looking for a, a spot down at Hayworth Park and there was no one to help him anywhere. Teresa wasn't up here at the desk and he said somebody from Hayworth just sent him up to City Hall. Didn't know who to talk to or what to do. Um, I know this host deal is going to help us a lot, but, um, I guess they basically told him, well, go on the internet and make, you know, you can go and register there. The guy didn't have a computer with him. And, uh, so, you know, we just need to maybe find some different contingency until we'd get the hosts in place.
We do have the, uh, kiosk that we were promised two or plus, so years ago, the only thing that's holding us back from that is just getting it mounted to make sure that it meets ADA specifications. And that should be done by the end of this week is what we're looking at. And so then the kiosk will be available. So that's where people will be able to go. And then with the campground hosts and that too.
Okay. Appreciate that information, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Twelve F, request to seek bids for twenty fourteen overlay project. G, request to seek bids to replace pavement and storm sewer. H, request to seek bids for storm sewer repairs at forty-second street and Valley View Avenue. I, recommendation to award the contract for purchase and implementation of City Works software. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a couple of questions for Jeff Roberts, uh, this morning with respect to the, um, the way we're going to pay for this. And as Jeff explained to me, uh, the grant is going to pay for the purchase of this and future allocations of, of budgetary amounts, we're going to have to cover the annual cost of that, of that license fee. Uh, am I correct in that, Jeff?
That's correct. And that'll be split with Sarpy County. So our actual yearly cost will be seventeen thousand five hundred a year.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Twelve J, approval and of an authorization for mayor to sign an agreement with Verizon Wireless. Takes us back to the pre-council agenda. Item five. Executive session, discussions on the following. Council, Councilwoman Sanyuk.
For the protection of the public interest, I move that we go into an executive session to discuss real estate negotiations with World Baseball Village and real estate negotiations for the city-owned Daniels property, farm property at thirty-six and Cape Part.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Discussion, see none, please vote. Thank you. It is now two twenty-two. We will go into executive session where our discussions will be restricted to what has been said by Councilwoman Sanyuk. April the twenty-eighth. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you could please rise and please remain standing for the invocation by Father Denny Henneman, Saint Mary's Catholic Church, twenty-three oh two, two Crawford Street.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and loving God, we thank you for the beauty of this sunny day, for the rains that you have showered forth upon us, that are bringing to life and to springtime our world and perhaps even our dispositions. We thank you for the other blessings that are part of our life, our community of Bellevue. Tonight, as we gather, we pray and especially for those who are hurting in any way, those who have faced trial and difficulty today, those who are struggling financially, those who are struggling socially. Bless all of them, Lord, and bring them healing and peace. Bless this meeting tonight, Lord. May the discussions, lively though they may be, be filled with a spirit of peace and goodness. And may always our center and focus be our community of Bellevue and the betterment of all people that live within its limits. We ask this and we pray, in Christ Jesus, our Lord who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Father Denny. Item number two, Kay, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mrs. Sanyuk?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Knudsen?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. Three A, approval of agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Miss Sanyuk. Discussion, see none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Three B, approval of consent agenda, agenda, Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Discussion, see none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Three C then would be under consent. Item four, also under consent. Item five, none. Six, none. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Ordinance number seven A, ordinance number three seven five seven. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven five seven and ordinance to amend section two point zero four, ordinance number thirty-six nineteen Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the definition of automotive repair services. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Councilwoman Sanyuk.
Motion to approve ordinance number three seven five seven.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knudsen. Discussion, Mr. Knudsen.
Uh, I just got a comment to make. You know, we originally started this whole deal to appease one business owner down in Old Town. Uh, it's turned into kind of a long drawn-out deal. I just want the, Eugene, I'd like to have you guys go do a story on that lot down there right now and look at the thirty-some boats that are in there and trucks and how they're parked on sidewalks and everything else down there and how, uh, that's what we were trying to avoid down there by having some type of parameter set. And it seems like he's got no inclination to work with us on that down there. And I mean, this is our entrance into Old Town and it, it's just really looking very pathetic down there.
Any other discussion? Miss Sanyuk.
I also will make a motion to amend ordinance three seven five seven with the changes as proposed by myself in the council packet.
I'll second that.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't support this amendment. I think it defeats what we are intending to do because when we take out, all such work must be performed within an enclosed structure. I think that it allows even more things to happen out on the concrete, out in front of the property and where we've got things parked now. It doesn't say anything about you have to have doors closed. It doesn't say you have to have windows closed. It simply says that when you operate your business, you need to have a structure there. To say you don't have to do it within a structure, to me, I'm wondering what that does to the rest of this section. And can you just have a slab of concrete or maybe even the ground and start working and repairing things? I, I'm also bothered because it looks like a lot of things are accumulating across the street and how long is it going to sit there? I've watched kids having trouble crossing the street from school and that's dangerous. And I personally don't want to be responsible for a child getting injured trying to cross that street. When I look today, again, there are boats and there's a little thing that hauls boats, a little tractor thing, sitting on the sidewalk. And it's all right up tight on and even over the sidewalk and next to the traffic light. It's a danger. It's a hazard. I wish there were a middle ground. I'm not trying to do anything to make this business owner's life more difficult, but I don't want to make the schoolchildren, the drivers and other people's lives more difficult. And I see this amendment not really doing what I would like to see it do. So I can't support the amendment, but I would like to see something else.
My blood.
One for clarification, I, I think the amendment and, and Councilwoman Sanyuk, correct me if I'm wrong, is in response to the garages that have always followed the rules and we've never had an issue and really didn't need to change the ordinance because they were all complying as much as possible. Um, they were worried that they wouldn't have the opportunity to even open garage doors if they needed to, to cool off the work area or, um, that they had fumes that they needed to release while they were working on a car engine. Um, and so it's my understanding that's what this was in response to. But, you know, here this, this, this reminds me of some other issues that we've drawn out for months where, we're trying to make it right for everybody. And there's usually one squeaky wheel that makes it hard on us to do that. And so we had to decide, did it need to be changed in the first place? Because we really didn't have very many issues the way the ordinance sat at the beginning. I, I believe Councilwoman Carmichael said that at the very beginning. Um, I just, I'm just really worried that we're making laws in a knee-jerk way.
Mr. Carmichael.
As originally opposed, I brought it up so that it was to amend the principal permitted uses to allow that, that in the district. It had nothing to do with modifying the definition, nor did it have anything to do with, um, the two amendments that Councilman, Councilwoman Sanyuk is, has proposed that we remove, the fourteen-day limitation and all work being in an enclosed structure. Um, the automotive repair business will be, um, in my opinion, injured if we don't take these out because they do do work outside of their buildings. When somebody pulls a vehicle up, they go out, they evaluate it. It might need a new air filter. It might need any, any modification on an engine that is minimal that they can do outside. Technically, that would be in violation. Um, so I understand your consternation. Um, originally, this was an attempt to do something and put something back in the principal permitted uses that was always there in that zoning district. And that's not what came to us and that's why we are here today.
Miss Sanyuk.
I did hear, uh, concerns from auto, uh, from mechanics about occasionally having to do something out in the parking lot. Uh, I'd be perfectly willing if you wanted to, if you were, if we thought we needed to keep the sentence, all work must be performed in the garage slash repair shop, that, that'd be okay. But still, there are, there are mechanics concerned that occasionally they run out and check the oil or whatever in the parking lot. So as far as the, uh, the, the timeline, if it truly takes ninety to a hundred and twenty days to clear title and they express concerns about keeping a car on the lot till the title is cleared, you know, you could write in a hundred and twenty days. Is, are we really going to keep track of that? Are we going to count? So yeah, I, it's tough.
Mr. Carmichael.
I apologize. I, I lost my train of thought there for a minute. Um, I also agree that the aesthetic view of Mr. Grasso's garage is not acceptable to me. Um, to have thirty-some boats, I didn't count them, Steve, but I'm sure you did today. Um, you know, it tells me he's doing a lot of business. Um, that being said, it doesn't, it does no value to our community, especially Mission, to have that view on our major street in South Bellevue. Uh, that disappoints me and, and whether it passes or fails tonight, if it passes, I would still like to go back and, and revisit restrictions on, on, I don't know, I can't say that property, but there's, there's got to be a way to make him comply or to make him understand that, that the visual aspects of his, of his business mean a lot to the downtown area. aspects of his business mean a lot to the downtown area.
Councilwoman Blood?
I just want to piggyback on what Councilman Carmichael said. You know, we can say something that's totally neutral, like I'm going to say now, and it always comes back that we're not friendly to new business. But here's the bottom line, we purposely have zoning put into place in areas, areas where it should be residential, areas where it should be business. Within those business communities, we have specific types of zoning where you are and are not allowed to do something. As a business coach, I tell my clients, when they find a location to put their business, I say, "Before you even consider renting that property or buying that property, how is it zoned?" That's Business 101. You don't rent the property or purchase the property, and then bully your way into trying to get it rezoned and trying to get your way. That's not how it's done. And although I welcome the new business into Old Town, I question the way it's been done. I question the banner that was put up without really speaking to any council people about the zoning, taking it directly to the media instead of taking it to the council. I question the way it's been done, and now here we are, doing backflips, trying to accommodate him again, and I just don't think that's a good way to do business, and I don't think that's fair to the other businesses that comply. So I just really, I guess I'm going to be the squeaky wheel, and say, I kind of resent the way the whole thing's been handled on the consumer side of it, and I don't see a whole lot of appreciation for us trying to work it out so we can help accommodate him from that consumer either. So I think we open up a door for a lot more of this if we keep trying to bend over backwards for somebody who didn't do their job, which was check the zoning before you bring a business to any property. I know very few business owners that don't know that.
So we have a motion, we have a second. I believe we had amendment?
We had a vote on the amendment.
So, any further discussion? Okay, please vote on the amendment.
The vote is five to one. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we vote on the original, as amended. Everyone. Do we have it all, Kay?
I do.
Okay.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
So the motion, the ordinance is adopted.
Yes. Thank you, as amended.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Item 7B, ordinance number 3764. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3764, and ordinance to amend section twelve, excuse me, nineteen dash twenty-three of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the publication of a general notice of the requirements of Article Three of Chapter Nineteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code, to repeal section nineteen dash twenty-three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing, and to provide for an effective date.
Mr. Knutson?
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number thirty-seven sixty-four.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number eight, none. Nine, none. Ten, we have nothing. Eleven, resolution. Eleven A, resolution number twenty-fourteen dash twelve, approving the preliminary engineering services agreement, supplement number three between the City of Bellevue and Olson Associates, Inc., for engineering services for Thirty-Sixth Street improvement. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to approve, resolution number two-zero-one-four dash one-two.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business. Twelve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H are under consent. Twelve I, recommendation to award the contract for purchase and implementation of City Works software to Burns and McDonald in the amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, plus yearly license fee of thirty-four thousand five hundred, split between the City of Bellevue and Sarpy County for assessed management software with a focus on public works operation. Mr. Knutson?
I'll make a motion that we award the contract for purchase and implementation of the City Works software to Burns and McDonald in the amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, plus a yearly license fee of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the city with Sarpy County to pay a like amount.
Second. Second by Miss Sanjuk. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. J, approval of and authorization for mayor to sign an agreement with Verizon Wireless for an air card for the GIS survey equipment. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to approve the authorization and approval of the mayor to sign an agreement with Verizon Wireless for an air card for the GIS survey equipment.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, public request to be heard, any member of the public address in the council shall abide by the Council Policy Resolution Number Thirty-Five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual, so attack is elected official, a city official or employee, or a member of the general public, and City Code Section Two dash six-eight regarding manner of addressing the councils. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers.
My name is Steve Draper, I live at 9807 South Twenty-Fourth Street. I thought I would take this opportunity, because this is the last time that the council will meet before the primary election that's just coming up.
Actually, we'll have one more meeting.
We will?
On the twelfth.
The day before, okay. Well, I'll still take this opportunity anyway, even though I made a mistake there. And to talk about the topic of voting and electing officials. I believe that we, we are, as a people, we are blessed to be free to vote, and we live in a day and time in our country where everyone has the right to vote. Our country went through a time where people of certain ethnic backgrounds couldn't vote. We went through a time in our country where people of certain gender couldn't vote. We went through a lot of different times in our country, but our process of free elections works. Because of that process, those things changed, so that we have the freedom that we have today to vote. And I want to encourage everyone to vote in these primary elections coming up, because some of the offices will be determined in the primary. There will be some of the citizens that sit back and say, well, I'm going to wait until the fall election. Well, for some of these offices, it'll be too late if you wait till then to exercise your vote, because those decisions will have already been made in the primary because of those who chose to run for office, or those who chose not to run for office. I'm not going to talk about any specific individuals for any specific office, but these are the principles I use when I look at an official, whether I want to vote for them or not. And we started out this meeting by pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the word, one of the words in there is, "We pledge under God." And we, most of the people of this country believe that we live in this country because we live under God, that he's the one that created this. And so, I look at, when I elect a person, do they believe in God? If they don't believe in God, that doesn't necessarily mean I won't vote for them, but I still look at their character, because I believe no matter what education that any of our officials have, no matter how skilled they are, you cannot teach character, you can't learn that in office. That's something you have to have when you come into office. So I look at people, hope that's not my five minutes. And, but I look, I hope that my elected official is slow to anger. I want people who are passionate about what they believe in, that have principles, but be slow to anger, quick to forgive others. I look for men and women that are of high character, that are honest, that are sober, that are persuasive with their fellow men and women, that they have an attention to detail, that they get along well with others, even those that they disagree with, they can still be friends with them. I want a person in office who can disagree respectively, that will behave also in a nonpartisan way on nonpartisan issues. And with that, I refer specifically to the fight that happened on filling an office that was vacant in the city council. There were members of the council that behaved in a partisan way, in my view, on an issue that was nonpartisan. And I just want to encourage everyone to vote, and that, and thank you very much.
Good evening, Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. Last meeting, I announced that many of the items I was looking into in the city, I was going to put in the back burner until the primary election, which is May thirteenth. That wasn't in the minutes. But some of the things that I've been looking at, will continue to look at after the primary, is the rescue squad billing, what has happened with the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars the city was going to collect, concerned about, I'm concerned about the wastewater fund money, how that, if that's not, I hope that's not been used, the cell phone tower lease, I'm looking to that, the cost of a contracted attorney versus a full-time city attorney, and also the lack of a monthly balance sheet. So these are things I've talked about in the past, and I will continue at the primary to talk about these. But the thing I want to talk about today is primarily is that about three weeks ago, something happened to me, which I hope will never happen to me again, and will never happen to any individual who comes into city hall. I was in a public, I was in an office, a city office, it's not restricted. Oh, I can talk about this. I can talk about this. And it was not a restricted office, I was in there getting some public records, which I had gotten before, and a city employee from another building came into that office to the doorway and said, "I should get out." And I thought he was joking, but he wasn't joking, and so I left, I didn't want to cause a problem. I have filed charges against him with the police department on April ninth, and I believe that Eugene Curtin is going to have a story in the paper this week. I haven't seen the chief's report after that. But what concerns me is that, what kind of image does this give to the City of Bellevue when a person can't even go into city hall and go to an office, which he has the right to go to, and get documents that he has the right to get? That, to me, is an entirely bad image. Now, since that time, I have not heard from the mayor or from the city minister, they haven't known about this for a while. All I can say, if I was mayor, the person that did that would be fired already. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Dotte Draper, and I live at 9807 South Twenty-Fourth Street. For some reason, today, I'm a little more nervous than usual, so if I start talking too fast, wave at me or something, okay? This thought has come to me often, and I don't know if you can actually do it or not, but I want to put a thought in your head to think about, and maybe when you get back, whatever time you guys meet again, not next week, not in two weeks, but after that, see if this is plausible. My suggestion is to have any or all persons who live in Bellevue who are court-appointed to do community service, have those people work on either cleaning Bellevue public parks, do sidewalks snow removal, or other such public service assignments. This could help the city expenses, it could help keep the city cleaner, and it could show a good example to others of working even when you don't feel like it.
Are there others? I see none. I'll close the public request to be heard. Item fourteen, adjournment. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, see none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Have a good night, thank you for coming.